All right, we'll call the meeting to order. We are missing one board member. He should be here in just a minute, so we'll do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with open forum, public input. Anybody? Doesn't look like anybody's here, so we'll move to number five, approve agenda and changes to agenda.
So what was published, just so we make clear, and it's on your agendas here, but letter I, so everybody should have had letter I, and that's resolutions to amend the associate school board's protective trust agreement bylaws. So you think you have that on there, right? And then I think the other one that was not published is under ten action items, letter C, which is on yours, but approve the master contract and negotiated agreement. The time I had that in at Monday, if we didn't do that till Wednesday, but you know, we're done, so we add those two items.
All right, can I get a motion?
A quick question.
Yes, sir.
Or just approve agenda, okay.
Yes, sir.
I'll second one.
Okay, move by Sheldon Felder, second by Leshon, any other discussion? Hearing none, no in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carried.
All right, number six is conflicts of interest, and there's none listed there, so have anything new, anyone? Good, all right. Number seven is approve consent agenda. A is accept financial reports, B is approve march minutes, C is approve claims, D is approve contracts. The board will approve the following contracts for the following employees for the 2022-23 school year. Cole Knipling, six through twelve principal, Stephanie Wagner, K through three colony teacher, Courtney Roeth, kindergarten, two-year physician, Cara Hanish, is that how I said it? Early childhood special education teacher. E is approve ASBSD health insurance participation agreement. F is approve ASBSD health insurance pool rate renewal. G is approve ASBSD worker compensation adoption and renewal rate. G is approve ASBSD worker compensation adoption and renewal rate. H is approve ASBSD worker compensation participation agreement. And I is approve resolution to amend the ASBSD protective trust agreement bylaws. All right, can I get a motion to... Did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question on I.
Yeah.
I guess, get some clarification on that, I guess, just reading through it, it seemed like they were starting from scratch, is that...
All the yellow and the redlining and stuff. So our associate school boards, Craig can help me out, because he's probably more familiar than I am, but that protective trust agreement of bylaws, that is an organization that you belong to for your local workman's comp, so... Yeah, the... I think what they do is they have a managing board that goes through that agreement, that or that bylaw component, and they go through there and, yeah, what you see there, redline it, add, delete, kind of concept. Now, yeah, I mean, I guess I read through it, I mean, I'm used to looking up those things, so I don't know if there was anything in there that honestly was online, but...
They haven't done it for a long time.
Okay, that was my question.
That is...
Not a yearly thing, no.
No, it is not, no, this is, let's put it this way, in my twelve years, this is the first time.
Correct. And everything looked okay to you?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I read through it, but some of that stuff, I don't...
It's probably, it is a best practice, I mean, from time to time that that executive board goes through that process, but the associate school board's trust is, I think, still just kind of, I don't know, it's just probably getting above water, Craig, here in Omaha, this couple of years, maybe?
Oh, the last four, five. Four or five, yeah.
So it's probably good that they've done that, so, good question.
Okay. All right, any motion to approve? I'll second it.
Moved by Weber and seconded by Neeble to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, no in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carried.
All right, number eight is information discussion, staff reports, and we'll start with the high school principal report.
So I had prom this last weekend on Saturday, went absolutely fabulous. Students have all come back positive, the prom party was positive, great behavior of all the kids, I can't thank them enough, you know, and the parent support, so the event was great, at least from what I know now. Hopefully I don't hear something down the road, but as I, as I know it, it was a good event and lots of positive responses from it, and the kids really enjoyed it, so. That's happened. We're in the middle of testing right now for our smarter balance. Juniors and seventh graders are done, so they've gotten all their tests in, eighth graders are kind of about halfway through, and we also have our home. So we're in that process. Part of our headaches are dealing with, well, right now SCC LA is gone, great thing, good activity. We had HOSA that was gone a week and a half ago, FBLA has been gone. All of those activities have gone extremely well also. Kids have been well behaved, we've got multiple kids going to nationals, both in HOSA, and I think we have one going in FBLA. So kids are performing well at those events also. So those are other things that are going, and we're just kind of getting to the end here, so. We have awards night, which I'm guessing Mr. Fisher might say a little bit about. That's coming up here on April...
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth. And then we have graduation the fourteenth, so we're kind of in that mode where we're just jumping from one event to the next to the next, and we have two major ones left, and we're kind of ready to go and happy, so.
Thank you.
Here, Bob.
All right. For elementary, we, a couple of things going on. We started our state testing this week, so that started today. We'll go through this week here and get everybody in, and then we got a couple of weeks built in for makeup and different things like that if we need them. So that's off and rolling. We finished, we did our kindergarten screening on Friday of last week, and that was really positive. We had twenty-four kindergarteners, a couple preschoolers came in, so twenty-four kids came into that. Puts our kindergarten numbers for next year at around forty-four, forty-five. So they're in a good spot with kindergarten being in that twenty-ish range. So the numbers are kind of what we expected there, so that's all looking good, and it was exciting to see some of those unfamiliar faces, but see the parents come in with them, and most of them are coming from our preschool. A couple new families came into that as well. So it was good to see just a couple people that, you know, were in, live in the community, but their kids maybe weren't here now, bringing their kids in the kindergarten for next year, so that was exciting.
Adam, how does that compare to where we're at today?
We have currently forty kindergartners.
Okay.
With twenty-two begin to gardeners. And so we'll be up in those two places. And that's, you know, we'll see if anybody else shows up, hear rumors about different people coming, so. We're at forty-five and twenty right now, I think, with kindergarten. Preschool, we're at like thirty-two or three right now, which is, that's down a couple, but I think we still might get a couple from what I'm hearing, there's maybe families in the community that just haven't signed up for preschool. So that's where we're at.
So does that keep with our plans and how we plan on structuring?
Yep. Yep, so we're all set to go with three sections of kindergarten for next year, to have smaller class sizes there. Beginning garden's still a little bigger than I would like, but I think it's manageable. We'll get some support in there to help the teacher there, so that we can do different things with small groups and different things to make sure all the students are supported and have a real positive learning experience. Yeah, so that's coming together nicely and excited about that, yep. We also had our third through fifth grade music concert last week, which was a great event. It was great to see we had that in the NPR, it was up on stage, and man, we had a great turnout for that, I think we had, you know, I was asking Mr. Digman, he said if he counted the chairs correctly, I think we're close to probably three hundred and forty people that came to watch. So it was awesome experience with that, and seeing those kids up on stage and singing was a lot of fun, and I think says a lot of, hopefully, about the future of our music department and keeping those kids engaged and doing well there. So that was another good thing that was happening last week. So as far as other transitioning kind of into the events side of things, you know, we have our, Mr. Norden talked about the awards ceremony that we'll do August twenty-eighth. We also have our spring play that'll take place the day after that.
Is it April twentieth?
April twentieth, yep.
Okay.
Yep. And we'll, our spring play is the day after that on the twenty-ninth. So that stuff's happening. Track is in full swing as far as practice, we haven't been able to get any meets in yet, but today was a junior high one. We're scheduled to go to Wagner tomorrow, looks like we'll probably be able to get that in. Golf is, girls golf is gearing up, they're getting ready for some competition coming up here shortly. We have a big track meet with Mitchell on Thursday, we'll see how the weather holds for that. We did cancel our meet that we were gonna host, our early bird meet. We have a couple more coming up in May that hopefully we'll host and get those in here and get that rolling in the right direction. So that's kind of the recap of those events. One thing I wanted to ask, and I forgot to bring my copies around the printer, but Mr. Digman wanted me to check with you guys, would now be the right time for that, Mr. McKinnon, on the mascot for our Ethan Parkston cross-country and track. If you remember back in the fall, I kind of brought that forward when we were in cross-country time. And he's proposing the Minotaur with, you know, bull head representing the wrestlers from Ethan with kind of that Trojan shield and warrior on the bottom half. He has talked with cross-country team kids, track kids at both Parkston and Ethan, presented that to them. Everything's been positive feedback as far as that goes, I reached out to the principal at Ethan. So I wanted to just, if you can remember, that's kind of what he's looking at. And there, and he was good with it, in favor of it, I talked to Mr. McKinnon before, he didn't have any objections to it, but it's still, in my opinion, like the board makes that ultimate call of if we want to move forward with that or not. But this mock-up was done by Mrs. Mehdi, the art teacher, and that's kind of what they're proposing as being the mascot for Ethan Parkston cross-country and track, the Minotaur. So wanted to present that to the board and see what you guys, what your thoughts are. You know, that would be moving into next year. Thoughts on that? So I think that's kind of it for my report on information, but...
Do you want an answer on this tonight, Adam?
If you guys feel like you could, that'd be great, if not, then I, you know, we'll table it for the next one, so whatever you guys think with that.
Go ahead, Jed, thoughts?
I'm good with it, you know, as long as Mr. Digman, and I'm sure it's been vetted through you guys, I'm good with that, what do you guys think?
I agree.
Neutral.
Do it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Do we need to vote on that, Craig, for the minutes, or?
Probably should.
Yeah, okay. Do we need a motion?
Motion.
Yeah.
Moved by Sheldon Felder, seconded by Weber to approve the Ethan Parkston track and cross-country mascot for the FY twenty-three school year as the Ethan Parkston Minotaurs. Any other discussion? Hearing none, no in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carried.
All right, so you want me to move to discussion item B?
Under discussion.
All right, we'll come back to the superintendent report, we're gonna move to number nine, discussion item B, discuss request for proposal for architectural engineering services. The board will listen to a presentation from...
Sprethman.
DA Davidson on potentially financing options for an addition. The board will then discuss and consider interviewing firms to have submitted a proposal for services. The number of firms, dates, and time to conduct interviews will be decided.
So we have, Mr. Sprethman has come, Craig and I have reached out to him. I'll let him explain instead of telling us thunder what he does for a living, it makes more sense when those leave it to the experts, but he was gracious enough to come tonight on a very short, last-minute phone call last Friday, so I truly appreciate his time, because he's just not coming from Sioux Falls, he's coming from Omaha, so appreciate you coming. And Mr. Bruning has, I believe, Mr. Sprethman's PowerPoint. Yeah, presentation that we're gonna just spend some time going through, with the hopes, the end goal is, my goal for you guys is, and myself, get a little more educated on either the bond versus the certificate outweigh or process, and then make some decisions. There is, yeah.
All right.
I don't know how effective that's gonna be, Jerry, but...
Okay.
It's the top red button.
Okay.
And if you point it, it's got a green dot on it, I guess, so when you point it up, it may... And if it don't work, Mr. Fisher, it's his pointer.
Oops.
Yeah, we gotta get...
We got it, we got it, we're good.
Yeah, I see a green dot there.
Yep, definitely, good deal.
Well, Craig's getting that set up, folks, it's an absolute pleasure to be here tonight. I've been in the investment banking business since nineteen ninety-eight. Started in Nebraska, then with a company called Hannaford Ingleoff, a little boutique firm that was based out of Denver. About five years after that, I got a call from Kirkpatrick Pettis, and that's a firm that has been around in Nebraska for a long time, and at Kirkpatrick Pettis was a good old boy named Darwin Ryder from Wound Socket, South Dakota. And he was the guy that built pretty much all the schools up the I-29 corridor here in South Dakota. And his business model was to cover the state from Omaha, and I took over for Darwin in two thousand and fourteen. And what we do, what I do strictly, is South Dakota bonds and certificates for school districts, cities, counties, any type of entity that can issue tax exempt or taxable bonds. And so we are a very large firm, even though we're a regional firm, our footprint runs from New York all the way to California, but I'm a Midwestern fellow, I spend a lot of time up here in South Dakota, put about thirty-five, forty thousand miles a year on the car coming up here to this great state, and I love it. You all have great folks, it's a lot of fun. So, and how do I make this thing move to the next?
I gotta do that.
You're gonna do for me? Oh, God bless.
You just say next, Jerry.
Well, hey, I appreciate that. Yeah, it's kind of like being at the conference. So this is a company overview. Basically, there's a couple things I want to point out. Number one, over here on the right, you see that we've got five hundred and eighty-two million of net revenue in this last fiscal year. What that means, folks, is that we can underwrite very large transactions, and we do, but we also underwrite a lot of smaller transactions for folks all over the country, and especially here in South Dakota. And so when you hear the term underwriter, you know, you think, oh, okay, yeah, insurance, you know, what does that exactly mean? When we go out to sell a transaction, if we end up trying to sell, say, a ten million dollar financing, and we get nine point eight million dollars worth of orders, we still have to deliver ten million dollars to the client. So we step up with our capital and we buy that two hundred thousand, and then we work it off later to ensure that the client gets the money that they need for their project. So that's why that net revenue number's important, because that's our money that we put up. And then in that last sentence there on the right, since nineteen eighty-two, the firm has underwritten in excess of two point five billion of bonds and certificates for South Dakota issuer clients, very proud of that. Would you go to next, please, Craig? Thank you. So from a national standpoint, just to give you a little bit of comfort, you know, as to how we perform in the marketplace, you'll see on the left, by number of transactions, number of deals, we're ranked fifth in the country last year, in the country nationally. And on the right, as far as the amount that we underwrote, we're a top twenty in the country at four point eight billion dollars of underwritings, okay? So we've got the firepower to get it done, and we'll get it done for you. Please go ahead to the next. And then just a quick look at the South Dakota rankings from last year, you'll see that we were far and above, you know, the other, the other folks who work here in the state by a hundred million, well, two hu, almost two hundred million dollars. And so we're ranked number one with sixty-seven percent of the market share, so very proud of that as well. Go ahead, Craig, thank you. That's a picture from two thousand and ten. I don't think I look like that anymore, but, you know, I'm an optimist by heart, so I keep that picture in there. So I like to look at that every once in a while, so go ahead, thank you. So this is a list of all the financings that I've done since January of fourteen, when I took over for Darwin Ryder, and I'm the gentleman who works up here in South Dakota. So there's a lot of transaction, and I'm very proud of that. So Craig, if you could take down and all the way to the fourth page, thank you. There we go. So you see that I've underwritten a couple here this last month and a half, two months, Flandrew and Chamberlain. We did a refunding for Flandrew, we did a nine million dollar certificate issue for Chamberlain. So to date, I've got eight hundred and forty-six million dollars worth of transactions up here in South Dakota since January first of two thousand and fourteen. So that what I'm doing, very proud of that record, and look forward to adding to it significantly as the next few years go by. So please, go ahead. So how do school districts finance their capital improvements? Well, you've got two options as a school district in South Dakota. You can issue bonds, or you can issue capital outlay certificates, go ahead, Craig. So basic definition, bond is a debt instrument, it's a way for a governmental entity or a company to raise money by something I use with interest payments annually. Okay, capital outlay certificate is a limited tax bond. A general obligation bond, the one on the left, the school district or the issuer, but we're talking about school districts here, pledges your full faith and credit of every penny in your, of your taxable valuation within the school district's boundaries. So you have approximately a five, five hundred nine million, five hundred thousand dollar valuation. If you were to do a bond, and it passed, and the, using the sixty percent requirement, hitting the sixty percent super majority, the school district pledges that entire amount to the repayment of those bonds. That makes investors real comfortable, because that's a lot to pledge. On the capital outlay side, however, you're pledging your capital outlay levy only up to the max of three dollars per thousand, okay? So that's the difference between a bond and a certificate. One's unlimited, as to the pledge, the other one is limited. Go ahead, Craig, thank you. So when we start talking about, you know, how you issue bonds, how you issue capital outlay certificates, as I mentioned, the authority for the issuance of bonds, you have to go out and ask your voters and get sixty percent super majority to vote in favor at an election. As I mentioned, the security, all the taxable property located within the school district, ad louran pledge, meaning a tax pledge, unlimited as to rate or amount. The length of maturity, you can issue bonds up to fifty years from the date of issuance. A lot of us we've seen so far is thirty, and that was fairly recent. And then the amount is limited to ten percent of a school district's assessed valuation. Now, that's different than your taxable valuation. Your assessed valuation is usually a little bit higher, okay, than your taxable valuation, and I'll get into that a little bit more. So as far as capital outlay certificates are concerned, what's the authority for issuance? A majority vote of the Board of Education. Okay, you don't have to go get a bond election for an issuance of capital outlay certificates, you know, under certain circumstances. Security, pledge of that capital outlay levy not to exceed three dollars per thousand of taxable valuation. Length of maturity, you can only go out twenty years, not fifty years, twenty years for certificates. And then the amount, so it's limited to one and a half percent of your taxable valuation, not assessed valuation, taxable valuation, without it being subject to referendum, okay? But the max you can have outstanding at any one time is three percent. So of that ten percent assessed for bonds, three percent is made up of capital outlay certificates, and it's three percent of your taxable valuation. Go ahead, Craig, thank you. So when we talk about a financing, who's involved, okay? And in all transactions that are publicly offered, you've got your issuer, which in this case is the school district. Superintendent, business manager, and the Board of Education are involved in that, that's why we're talking here tonight. Your architectural firm provides drafting services, construction cost estimates, oversees the bid process on behalf of the school district. Bond counsel law firm, okay, represents the school district, drafts the resolution authorizing the issue of, issuance of the bonds or certificates, issues an opinion on the tax exempt status of the bonds or certificates, and verifies that the bonds or certificates have been validly issued pursuant to state law. It's a lot of responsibility right there, right? So we work with a gentleman named Todd Meyer Henry, and Todd is out of Sioux Falls. He's been doing this for thirty years. He writes probably ninety-five percent of the tax opinions for tax exempt bond issuance across the state. So he's very, very knowledgeable and knows what he's doing, and he's a good guy. Underwriting firm, that's us, structure the financing of the bonds or certificates. We sell the bonds and certificates through our trading desk, and then we close the financing of the bonds or certificates so that you get your money. And then a registrar paying agent, that's typically a bank, which ensures that the principal interest payments made by the school district on the bond certificate are sent to the purchasers in a timely fashion, okay? So what happens is, bonds or certificates get issued, you have a repayment schedule, you get a invoice from your registrar paying agent that says, okay, you know, you owe this much, needs to be paid by this date, make sure that you get that payment in, and they send it off to New York, to the Depository Trust Company, which oversees disseminating out the money to all of the owners of bonds throughout the country. They're a national organization. So it, it, it's a way to assist the school district in making sure that payments are made on time and the correct amounts are made. Go ahead, Craig, thank you. So in every single offering document that we put together for a bond or certificate transaction in South Dakota for school districts, we put this language in there. So this is kind of a rehash, if you will, but this is the actual language. So under the South Dakota Constitution, the total indebtedness of a school district may not exceed ten percent of the assessed value of the property within such school district. South Dakota law versus the Constitution, South Dakota law further provides that the portion of the total debt represented by capital outlay certificates may not exceed three percent of a school district's taxable valuation. So there's a differentiation right there between bonds and certificates as far as the limitation and what that's based on and how, and what's calculated on. Go ahead, Craig, thank you. So you folks are probably interested in what your, you know, debt margin is. Well, as of today, if I have the numbers right, your debt margin is fifty-seven million, seven forty-one, six fifty-one. And when I say if I have the numbers right, that just means, you know, I looked at your audit, and all you have outstanding in capital outlay certificates right now is nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of qualified Zona Academy bonds that you're paying with your capital outlay levy. And that's gonna mature in two thousand and twenty-four, so you'd be debt-free at that point unless you were to issue some certificates or bonds prior to that. So the constitutional debt limit, there's ten percent of assessed value. So I calculated that today, and I'd like to show you how I did that, go ahead, Craig. So what we do is we take every county in which the school district sits, and each county has a value that makes up your entire taxable valuation. So you take the ag amount, you divide it by the ag factor, which is eight point eight five for pretty much everybody in the state, there are a few exceptions to that, and then you come up with an amount. Then you take the non-ag portion, and you divide it by the non-ag factor to get the non-ag amount, okay? And so you add the ag amount and the non-ag amount together to get your assessed value in each county, okay? So you can see that in Davison County, sixteen million, five sixty-eight, seven twenty-one. In Douglas, sixty-eight, nine forty-two, three thirty-one. Hanson, two hundred million, or excuse me, two hundred thousand, yeah, seven hundred and twenty-one, we're missing three numbers here. And then in Hutchinson, which is where the majority of your property is, it's five hundred million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty. So the district's total, I'm sorry, folks, I had that turned off, otherwise it buzzed like that, forgive me. So you can see your total valuation, adding all four of them together, is five hundred and eighty-six million, six fifty-six, five twelve, and there's your ten percent of that for fifty-eight, six sixty-five, six fifty-one, which was on the previous slide for to calculate your debt margin. So go ahead, Craig, if you want. So I get all of that information. So I get all of that information from the school valuation worksheet for taxes payable. Craig and Pat get these every year from Wendy Semler at the Department of Revenue. They send that out. It's calculations that are done at the county level, then it's sent to the state. The state, you know, puts it all together, checks it to make sure it's correct, and then sends it out to every school district in the state. So every school district gets this. So that's where I get all of the valuations that I then use to calculate your assessed valuation. So these are taxable valuations. Okay? Go ahead. So your borrowing capacity, 2021 pay 22 taxable valuation. This is for certificates. The max you can have outstanding at any one time is 3% of your taxable valuation. So there's your max borrowing amount, $15,287,892. Now you've got some Qs apps outstanding, as we talked about. So you take that away from the 15,287,92, 892, excuse me, and then you net your maximum borrowing capacity at 14,363,892, which allows you as a school district per South Dakota law to borrow up to that 1.5% and still be below your 3%, but you can borrow up to 7,643,946. Okay? Without it being subject to referendum. Okay? That law was put in place back in 1978, and it's a way to give school districts flexibility to build projects, to buy buses, to do whatever capital needs that you have. Right? And so that is how much you could actually borrow max based on your current taxable valuation for a project. Okay?
What happens if you have multiple projects? You already had some debt, then you got to take that away, right? It's not per project. It's total of all the projects you've done in like the last five years.
Right. But here's the interesting thing, and this has been litigated all the way to Supreme Court. You can do 1.5% per project. So let's say you do a project eight years ago. Okay? And your valuation's gone up and you've paid your debt down. You can go ahead and do another 1.5% so you don't, as long as you don't exceed the 3%, right? And so if you wanted to, although it wouldn't probably make sense from a financial standpoint, you could actually do a project for 1.5% and then come right back and do another one if you don't have any debt outstanding, maxed out at the 3, and you could do a $15,287,892.
But you can't go over that 3.
That's correct. 3% of the taxable valuation is the limitation. Okay? And in this case, it'd be actually 14,363,892 because you've got those qualified zone academy bonds there. So that is on a per project basis, based on your taxable valuation currently. That's your max right there. Go ahead. Thank you. So again, just to reiterate, but I got the statutory citations in here. Limited tax capital outlay certificates, 13,1660, 13,169. Max term 20 years, authority, majority vote of the Board of Education. Max levy, $3 per thousand of taxable valuation. That's what you're pledging. Okay? You're pledging your whole capital outlay levy to the repayment of the certificates. Public hearing, none if borrowing amount is less than or equal to 1.5% of the district's taxable valuation, or two required if the borrowing amount exceeds 1.5% of the school district's taxable valuation up to a max of 3%. Okay? Go ahead, Craig. Thank you. So we put together some numbers. Craig and Pat had requested 3 million, repaid 10, 15, and 20 years. 5 million, repaid 10, 15, and 20. And 7 million, repaid 10, 15, and 20. I'm not going to provide you with every single page from that. I'm just going to give you the $7 million borrowing amount repaid over 20 years. Okay? Because that's the closest to your max.
Papers I gave you, you have all three years, so you'd have to go to the last. The first one is the 10-year, then 15. So first three pages are 10-year, second three pages are the 15, and the last three pages are the 20.
What was in your packet was actually five, Mr. Duffman. So it's easier to look at this one if you want to follow along on paper. Sorry, Mr. Duffman.
Oh, you're fine, Pat. No worries at all. It's good to get everybody focused so we're all on the same page here when we're talking about this stuff. So projected closing date, June 16th of '22. I didn't know, you know, what your schedule would be, so I just had to pick a date hypothetically as to when you might close the transaction. So the closing date is actually the date where we move all the money and you get, and you get your cash to start your project. Projected borrowing amount, $7 million, just to keep it even, we went 3, 5, and 7. Maximum annual payment amount, that's the highest payment you'd have over the 20 years, Average annual levy, starting in fiscal year '23, '24, it's 95 cents per thousand. So it's approximately, call it a dollar, so it'd be a third of your capital outlay levy from the standpoint of how much you're pledging. Okay? And then the district's taxable valuation for this 21 pay 22, Net certificate proceeds for project, about that, $7,189,980,95. So Craig, go ahead and pick that, would you? So you see, folks, it's interesting. Because we've been in such a low interest rate environment for so long, buyers of these bonds and certificates want to try to get more interest. Okay? So they're willing to pay up, rather than paying dollar for dollar, they'll pay a higher price to get these bonds and certificates because they know, number one, you guys are going to pay your debt back. And number two, by doing that, it allows us to generate additional proceeds. That's what that premium is. Okay? So your actual, you know, sources isn't 7 million that you're borrowing. We're generating $7,336,3095 for you. So if you go down, we're going to deposit into the account that you designate for us at closing, $7,189,980,95, which is more than the 7 million you're borrowing. And then the rest of that is eaten up by paying the costs of the transaction. So the rating fee, Mr. Meyer Henry, a certificate or bond counsel, the credit enhancement fee, the paying agent fee, and then our fee. Okay? So let me take a step back and explain those. When we do financings in South Dakota that are in excess of a million dollars, we typically get a rating on the transaction because that gets you a better interest rate in the market. Okay? Standard and Poor's is who we work with most of the time. They put together a very nice report after we have a conference call with them, and that would be Pat and Craig and I, and talk to them about, you know, all things that have to do with the district and your budgets and your finances and all that. And usually it lasts about an hour to hour and 15 minutes. For that report, they provide the rating. And the expectation is that your underlying rating, which is up in the heading up there, would be an A+, which is a very good investment grade rating. Okay? And so for providing that rating and giving us the opportunity to get your bonds sold at a much lower interest rate than they would on a non-rated basis, they charge $15,500 for this particular par amount. So it's based off of how much you're borrowing. Okay? They have what they call a par range. Now Mr. Meyer Henry's fee, certificate counsel or bond counsel, he does the same thing. It's based off of how much you're borrowing. Okay? So he would get paid $10,400. And that's for providing his opinion that the certificates have been validly issued under state law, and they are exempt from federal income taxes. A lot of states, people pay a state income tax. So in those states, it's, you know, free from federal or state income taxes. But obviously, South Dakota doesn't have a state income tax. Therefore, you don't have to worry about that. Okay? And it's very important to have that. Every transaction, as I mentioned before, has an opinion from bond counsel because you want to have a professional attorney who specializes in this area provide the opinion to ensure that all the i's get dotted and the t's get crossed and that you don't have any hiccups after you close. So that's what he charges. And I can tell you, he's extremely competitive from a fee standpoint. I've seen in other states, you know, $2 million financing with a $50,000 bond counsel fee on it. It's just ridiculous. So anyway, I digress. The credit enhancement fee. Now, you'll see up in the heading, it says, "South Dakota Health and Educational Facilities Authority Credit Enhancement Program." Back in 2015, the legislature passed laws that allowed for the implementation of the South Dakota State Aid Pledge Program. And it's administered by the South Dakota Health and Educational Facilities Authority. And basically what happens is school districts are able to pledge their state aid and get a higher credit rating than Standard and Poor's would otherwise provide you. That's why you see the AA plus rating up there to the left of the A+ underline. That's the rating on the certificates based upon the state aid pledge that the school district would make. And I'm here to tell you, this program's been in existence now for seven years, and not one school district has had to have any type of intervention where the state ends up redirecting their state aid to make their payment. School districts in South Dakota do a wonderful job of managing the money and are conservative, and you always have the money to make your payments. But it is a backstop. And so that allows the school district to get a much higher rating, and that changes your rate by approximately 20 basis points. Okay? So a basis point is 1/100 of a percent. Okay? So 20 basis points on this particular financing would save you $100,000 in interest costs. Okay? So the cost at $8,750 is well worth it, well worth it. And then the paying agent, that's the bank that moves the money around for you. They pay, they get paid a fee upfront at closing, and then they charge an ongoing fee. So if you were to use, say, First Bank and Trust out of Brookings, they charge $1,000 upfront to get the account set up and all of that. And then they bill you, excuse me, they bill you approximately $600 a year. I think that's right. It might be a little bit less than that, for providing that service on an annual basis. Okay? So those are those costs. And then we charge a fee based on the par amount as well. Okay? And that fee is 1.5% of the par amount. And I'd like to point out that none of these fees are paid until closing. Okay? There's no upfront dollars. There's no upfront payments. You get, we get our money when you guys get your money. And that 7.189 million hits the bank, then we get our money. So that's how those sources and uses work there. Go ahead, Craig.
Who deferments our rating?
S and P does, Standard and Poor's. They probably do, I'd say three or, that's a little bit high, probably 100 a year in South Dakota of ratings. So they have their criteria cert, and they, you know, have all of these component parts of their criteria. And so when we go to request a rating, we send them the preliminary official statement that we use to sell the certificates. We send the last three years of your audits, most recent three years of your audits. And then they take a look at that information, and they start to, you know, insert it into their models and their criteria. And then, you know, based on your enrollment, based on your state aid amounts, based on how much debt you have, based on, you know, your proximity to another larger community like Mitchell. All of those things go into their analysis of where they come up with the rating. So the rating agencies, that's their expertise. And so with Standard and Poor's, you've got investment grade ratings. They start at triple B. So you've got triple B minus, triple B, triple B plus. Then you go to the single A category, so A minus, A, A plus. Double A, same thing. And then triple A. The state of South Dakota is a triple A rated entity. And so you guys get the double A plus rating, which is one notch below that because you're not the state, you're your own political subdivision as a school district. So Standard and Poor's determines the rating. They provide the rating. Go ahead, Craig. So this is an example of what, if the certificates were going to be sold in the market last week, this is what the pricing of the interest rates would look like. Okay? And so when you look at the rate, you see it's pretty much 3% all the way down until you get to those last five payments, and then it's 4%. That's the interest rate. The yield is what the buyer's willing to pay to get that rate. Okay? So they're willing to pay a price that's above par. So you can see over under price, you know, 101, 102. I mean, so that differential between the yield and the rate determines and generates that premium I talked about of $330,000. You get additional proceeds because of that. So that's what all that represents. It's basically the pricing, what the maturity amounts are, the maturity dates, and then how much the interest rate is, how much the yield is, and how much the price is. And it's pretty esoteric, folks. It's pretty technical stuff. I could talk about this for three hours, and I don't want to. It'd be, number one, it'd be a complete waste of your time talking about it more than about 10 or 15 minutes because, you know, it's like anything else. We all have our different areas of expertise. And until you do this for a while, it's really hard to grasp it.
So where's this at compared to the last couple of years with interest rates being really low?
You know, we have seen, that's a great question. We have seen rates go up, the yields go up, a full percentage point between the middle of January and the middle of March. So, and I will tell you, with regard to this particular scenario, if that happens again, if you guys were looking at trying to do something here in the next 60, 90 days, the Fed meets, they raise rates, and it goes up another 1%, it's going to cost you $525,000 of additional interest on this particular scenario. On the $5 million one of 20 years, it's about 375. And on the 3 million, it's around 225,000. So unfortunately, I think rates are going up, and they're going up to stay. The 10-year and the 30-year taxable rates, the treasuries were up again at maybe 70 basis points. They just keep bumping up. Now, we may see some, you know, relief from that. It's hard to say. Typically, in May, we see rates kind of trend downward. But just given so much that's inflationary in our economy, you know, what's going on in Ukraine and all of those things, investors are pretty nervous. And I think we're just going to see rates kind of continue to bump up, but maybe not as significantly on a daily basis as they have been here for the last 60, 70, 80 days.
Do we as a board decide when to set it?
Nope. You give us the authority because we're in the market every day to set the rate. We know what the rate is. And, you know, that's part of our job. We sell $5 billion worth of bonds and certificates every year. You know, we know what we're doing when we get, we've got trading desks in Denver, trading desks in Omaha, trading desks in Seattle. We're constantly selling different types of bonds, different types of certificates, both property tax based, revenue based. So you give us the authority to get that rate for you. So it's not a question of, okay, we've got the rate set. Now I'm going to come back out and talk to you about whether you're going to accept it. What happens is I call Craig and Pat, and I said, okay, this is where we're at. And they give me the verbal award, then we enter into a certificate purchase agreement that sets everything up, and then from there, we move to closing. So, but we're in the market every day. We know what the municipal market is doing. And that's part of our job, is to get you a very, very competitive rate in the market based upon where the market is. We have information that we get every day. It's called the MMD Index, Municipal Market Data Index. It shows where rates are every day on the municipal side, one year up to 30. We also get the municipal market analytics. That is one that is more geared towards investors. A lot of reports, a lot of information in it shows what other entities throughout the country are selling their bonds and their certificates for. So we get all of that color on a daily basis. So we know where the market is. Now, if I come in and say, oh yeah, you're going to be, you know, 3% in... Now, if I come in and say, oh yeah, you're going to be, you know, 3% in 27, and, you know, I think rates are going to be at a 2%. Well, that's ridiculous, because nobody has a crystal ball, right? So I can't, I don't, it's not my job to try to blow a lot of smoke your direction about what I think rates are going to do, and just pick a rate and hope we hit it. We have professionals, traders, who, you know, oversee our sales force, that say, hey, this is where the market is. And we can actually set up a call, you know, if you would like to be on the call with Craig and Pat, and we can tell you where the market is today, and we're looking at pricing it in two days, and where we think it's going to land. So, you know, we give that kind of feedback, if you'd like to hear that, you know, to give you an idea of that. So, but we definitely set the rate.
I mean, so essentially, Jerry, we have to give, we have to trust you to find that rate that is going to be the most beneficial for us on any one given day, because, you know, you could say, I mean, what's it going to be tomorrow? I don't know. I mean, I have a pretty good idea, but you don't have 100% guarantee on that. I mean, so, I mean, it's a complex game, or, I guess, but I don't know how else to...
That's right, it is, it's very complex. You know, not to be disrespectful to anyone in the community or anybody's industry, but, you know, a lot of times, my contemporaries and my colleagues say, we're not selling bond wars here, right? You know, this is a multimillion-dollar financing that has a lot of moving parts to it. And, you know, it's, you know, it takes a lot of expertise to make sure that we can provide to you what you're looking to get, and that's what you're paying us for.
So if we decide, I'm just putting a scenario together. We decide tonight to go ahead, when you put all this stuff together, give me a timeframe.
So what you would need to do, if you decided to move forward, I would then go back and request Mr. Meyer and me to put together a resolution authorizing it not to exceed amount of capital outlay certificates to be issued by the district. You would tell me at which meeting, whether you have a special, or whether you wait until your May 9 meeting, to adopt that resolution, okay? So once the resolution is adopted, I go to work. So if you were to make a decision tonight that you would want to move forward, I think my timeline, would you go ahead and kick forward a little bit, Craig? Quite a ways, quite frankly. Get through the numbers, there we go, right there, I'm sorry. So there is the timeline I put together. So I would have your money for you on July 14.
Okay.
Yep. So you can see the steps that we have to go through, and you can see the pre-marketing of the LTCO certificates. I mean, you know, we, you know, we get everything ready to go, and then we spend three days just out there in the marketplace talking to investors about it. And then on the 27th of June, we take indications of interest, which means we do a preliminary pricing. And then on the 28th, we actually have an order period for the certificate. So you've got, we've got a good five, six, seven days where we're really working your transaction. And we do this every day, so it doesn't take long. A lot of times, local folks want to try to buy some bonds or certificates, but they don't realize how quickly that happens once we're ready to go, because it only takes a day.
None of that matters, Jerry, but, I mean, you're not selling these probably locally. I mean, these things...
Actually, we are.
You are?
Yeah, the very first people we call are the local banks. Yeah? Because this is, it's known as a bank-qualified transaction, you know? So if you're less than 10 million, banks buy these, they get actually a tax benefit, you know? And so, and so, yeah, we offer them to the local banks. If there's anybody who would like to buy them from a personal standpoint, the minimum denominations are $5,000. You have to have an account with DA Davidson, so you have to open up an account. And, you know, it, from the standpoint of investing, it's a little bit better now because the rates are a little higher, right, from that perspective? But on the other side, we're not happy as a school district, because the rates are going up, you know? So there's been many a time when, you know, and I don't want to pick on Supes, Pat, but...
I've been on the flip side, in what you're going to talk about.
Yeah, yeah, the Supes say, hey, I'd like to buy some.
I had to give up a point for somebody to buy it.
There you go, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'd like to buy some, oh, God, that rate's awful low. So, you know, it's good for the school district, not so good for their investment portfolio. So as to your question, that would be the schedule if you were to adopt a resolution on May 9, that we would want to do that. And it wouldn't normally take quite that long, but you've got the 4th of July holiday in there, along with Memorial Day holiday, so you lose three or four days in there, so... But, you know, typically, it's 45 days or so from the time you adopt the resolution and getting your money.
That's what I was saying.
Yep. So Craig, if you kick back a couple of pages, I just want to quickly go through this now. So if you go forward, that's the pricing structure. These are just a bunch of statistics that, you know, are, what we provide in every set of numbers runs that we do. And so a couple that I'll point out to you, excuse me, is, I shouldn't use my ear, I'll forgive me. So this one right here is your true interest cost at 3.117, okay? And there's your average coupon, which is 3.489. Now, your all-in TIC, which is 3.17. So the true interest cost is calculated down here to get this, but basically, that's your rate, okay? You're paying the coupon, but you don't have to issue an additional $300,000 of certificates because you're generating that with the premium. And then the all-in TIC, that's your true interest cost, true interest cost plus your transaction costs. That's all in. Okay? Excuse me. Go ahead, Craig. Thank you. And then this would be your repayment schedule. So we got an interest payment up there in February 1st of '23, and then you've got a principal and interest payment on August 1st of 2023, and then your final payment would be August 1st, 2042. This is the 20-year scenario, obviously. And you can see that your interest cost is around, is it 2.8 million? Or is it 2.3?
Eight, it's eight.
Thank you.
At closing, all funds are available?
Yes, they are. They're your... We put them into your accounts, you know, for the school district's account. And then we also structure it so that there's a redemption date, so that, and that's, for a 20-year transaction, it's going to be 10 years from the date of issuance. So once you reach that 10-years redemption date, the school district can refinance it, can pay it off, can pay longer maturities off, so that you reduce your interest costs for those next 10 years. You've got all that flexibility. Up to that time, though, you can't pay them off early, and you can't refinance them. So it locks in for the buyers that rate and that schedule, because they like this particular credit. They like the school district, like, I don't have any debt outstanding. They want to have that rate for at least that first 10 years, and after that, then the school district has the opportunity to refinance them, pay them off, or pay them down.
It gives them their chance to make their money in that first 10 years timeframe. So you've got to hold them, I don't know, harmless isn't the right word, but I mean...
Right, it's just like a prepayment penalty on a mortgage. You don't normally see that very often, but that's what it's basically analogous to. And so with the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, this is for the 20 now, what are they for the 10? Or were you getting there?
I was, but thank you, I appreciate you reminding me. So for the 15-year, it would be an eight-year redemption period, and for the 10-year, it would be a five-year redemption period. So they get shorter as you get shorter in the maturity schedule.
So I was looking at the different years here, and I looked at the mill levy. And we're currently at, I was looking at the 20-year maturity. And so you looked at the .20 that we're currently at. If we went with the 20-year plan here, it goes up to .68.
So which par amount is that, sir? Is that 7 million?
Are you looking at the 7 million, John?
Five million.
Yeah, that's the five million.
That's the 5 million, that's right.
So I'm just asking here, and I don't know if we've done that here or not, but what would that do to people here on the taxes?
Yeah, so we have, so after Mr. Spethman has done, Craig's done a lot of that work, and then we'll give you what that potential cost could be to the taxpayer.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so that's your repayment schedule. As I mentioned, on this particular one, the max payment is $488,050. Okay? Go ahead, Craig, if you would, thank you. And then, kind of we just discussed, the tax impact with regard to the tax levy, right? So on this one, $7 million, we pay it over 20 years. We take your assessed, it says assessed valuation, but it's actually taxable valuation. I just can't get our quant guys to change that. I'd rather it had to say taxable valuation. But in any event, we don't use any increases, we just use the same taxable valuation going all the way up to 20 years. We could, but that's a little bit more of a sophisticated analysis, assumes we have to make, we have to make certain assumptions and things of that nature. So we just do it basically because it's level repayments, so you've got your same taxable valuation, so we can show you what your levy would be all the way out. But obviously, as your valuation goes up, your levy would go down, because the payment amounts don't change, okay? Once we set those, they're set. So that's 95 cents per $1,000 of taxable valuation would be that levy, assuming a static taxable valuation, and that's not going to happen. Okay? That's our usual disclaimer stuff until we're hired. And that's the preliminary financing timeline, and then we'll open the questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It's a lot to digest, kids, I get it. And Craig and I having this conversation and relying on Mr. Spethman too, and his expertise, I don't know that the conversation tonight, I had no false pretenses in my head and push you or direct you into a decision where this had to have been made. I know, in my opinion, I know, we're not ready, you're not ready to do that, I'm not even sure I'm ready to do that yet, nor, I'm pretty sure Craig's not ready to do this yet either. But I think the second part of the conversation then, and, you know, if we don't have any questions for Mr. Spethman, he, I don't want to keep him here, I mean, he can stick around if he wants to, it's an open court meeting, but I'm sure he's got a journey that he wants to maybe get back on the road. We can write down any questions that come afterwards, but Craig and I then wanted to show you guys what you just asked Mr. Pearl about, okay, what does that look like on our behalf?
Does anybody have questions for him, so he can go if we don't? You good?
All right, guys? Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate your time and your attention. And I am going to hang around for a little bit. I'm interested to hear what you guys count that.
Thank you.
So I think moving forward, then, you know, the things that we talked about as far as what the mill levy is, based on what you have to do there, that 95%, well, we got those numbers to show you where our current mill levy is in our capital outlay, you know, and then what portion of that would have to be obligated in order to repay the certificates, and, you know, play with some, not play with some numbers, but give you some update on some numbers, based on some of the work that Craig's done in response to this, so... Got to wait a second, thinking. I didn't do this on the left one hand. And, you know, while he tries to get that up and going here, part of that, what's on the agenda there from that discussion item is to discuss the RFP for Architecture and Engineering Services. We had those proposals last month that we decided to table, until we had the financial questions a little bit more clear, you know? So asked Mr. Spethman to come up and do that, and gracious of him to do that on such short time. But now, part of that conversation is the process in order to, one of two ways, I mean, you could have conversations about doing this, whether it's at 3, 5, or 7 million, and, you know, potentially give a blessing, and then you could know that you have the financing secured. You could have a conversation then with these firms that made a proposal to you and decided, okay, who do we want to see to help come this, or watch this come to fruition, or help bring it to fruition, so...
Close out.
But my whole point is, is knowing that these are high-level decisions, guys, and difficult decisions, and not that you're not capable, but, I mean, nobody's pushing you in any direction to do any of this at this stage of the game, so... So Craig, you're...
Ready?
Yeah.
I don't have my 10-year ago picture, though, like Jerry did on his. Sorry, Jerry.
Could I ask you just one question for you, sir? So could you tell me what percentage of schools, if you could, what percentage of schools do certificates and do bonds?
Well, I'd say, I'd say 80 to 85% of school districts use certificates. As far as how many use bonds, it's a little bit harder to quantify from that standpoint. I'd have to do some due diligence to try to determine that, but, you know, we've, I've got a slide, I did use it tonight, but I have it for bonds, and it's bond elections that we've been successful at since 1996, and there's about 35 or 40. So you don't, you don't, you know, a lot of school districts prefer to use certificates.
Is it because they're scared of the 60% vote?
You know, that will figure into it, right?
Just asking the question.
Right, that can figure into it, you know, if you think, well, there's no way in God's green earth I can get, we can get a bond election passed, then, you know, having that flexibility to do certificates is a nice way to get your projects done. And so a lot of folks issue certificates.
So how big of an audience do they have when they pass that at school board meetings?
Well, you know, that's a good question. So I was just in Parkwood two weeks ago, and we had 200 people on a $5 million bond election. And there were some older folks in the crowd who didn't like the fact they didn't get a chance to vote on the certificates they issued last year. And now you're coming back to us with a bond election for 5 million. Well, the only reason is because the costs went up so exponentially that they can't do it with certificates now. They're like 4 million bucks short, given where the costs were. I was at two meetings last week in Brookings. They're looking at a $32 million bond election. There were 12 people at each meeting, you know? So the larger communities, you know, they, I think they have so much more resources that a lot of folks speak their mind at the ballot box. They don't come to the meetings per se. In the smaller communities, you get a lot of folks. But it's certainly permissible and could be a very good idea to have some public meetings if you're going to do certificates, to let folks know what you're doing, and, you know, why, you know, you need to do this, and why you're looking to do it. You know, I always have to be a little bit careful, because I always kind of say, well, it's not a tax increase. But that's only the case if you're levying the full amount that you can levy as a school district, because certificates are not a tax increase. It's a reallocation of your resources under the capital outlay fund. A bond is a definite tax increase because you're adding a bond levy.
So a question, Mr. Spethman, clarification, about the middle of the presentation, you said we're obligated to the 3% mill. You have to argue, you're pledging that whole $3 per thousand, but you don't have to ask for all of that.
No, of course not.
Yeah.
Of course not. Absolutely not. What you ask for is what those levy amounts are.
Yeah, exactly. So that goes back to the question, John, you know, how many people are you going to stir? Well, if you can do something like this without, you hold your patrons harmless right now, that you can do it, if we can show you on paper that there is not the necessity to ask for more, and on a mill levy, you know, that we can do this, it's no cost to them, right? Essentially, I mean, you're holding them harmless. You're not raising anything in the capital outlay, because you already have, well, that, if you, if we go through it, Craig, I mean, you'll, I think you'll see it, okay?
Okay, so the first thing I got here is the past five years, our tax requests that we did, and what the levy equivalent was.
Capital outlay, no?
Yep, yep, these are just capital outlays. So the last five years, these are the amounts that we asked for, because now we have to ask for it in a dollar amount instead of a levy equivalent. So I did the math to work out what the levy equivalent was for each of those years. So I did the math to work out what the levy equivalent was for each of those years. And here's what the maximum that we could have requested each of those years. Without any question for, I mean, other than you might get people here at the board meeting saying, why did our taxes go up to $3 instead of $1.67 per thousand? But our maximum amount that we can ask for is $3 per thousand here.
And those amounts there are $3?
These over here are. This is the maximum possible amounts that we could have asked for each of these five years that we asked for this amount.
Based on $3 per thousand.
Yep. Does that make sense?
The middle column is what the equivalent, the dollar amount which you did ask your counties for. It equaled to about $1.67.
Yeah.
Or $1.57 or $1.54. Knowing that you have $3 per thousand on the table that you could have asked for.
And every year this changes because your valuation changes. Because you know, see, well, why was 850 here, $1.67, and it was only $1.57 here? Well, because this was a correction year in the valuation process in the state of South Dakota. So everybody's overall taxable valuations went down this year, for the most part. Most of them did. Because the year before it was 543, somewhere's around that. I don't remember what ours was for sure. But it went down to five, his number of 509. But that's why this equivalent has changed here. And some people still think about the equivalent portion, the one point, whatever the mill levy was. Because everything else is still a mill levy. When they talk about the egg valuations and the owner occupies and all that, the state sets, those are all mill levies valuation. So that's why I did this for you here. But when we ask for it to the county auditors, we have to ask for it as a flat dollar now, now, for some. I don't know why. But that's what it has been. Okay, so now, what will 10 cent increase generate? Okay? So our valuation this year was the same number as Jerry had. You divide that by 1,000 to get this, and then you take it by your 10 cents. So instead of 800, if we went from 167 to 177, they gave us $50,000 more. Okay? So every time I change this a dime, this went to 900,000. This is how much money we would have gotten. Okay? All the way up to, when you get up here to the $3, you could go up to that. Now, what's it going to cost a homeowner? This is kind of what you wanted to know, right, John? So I did the math of a $250,000 homeowner. You divide that 250,000 by 1,000, gives you 250. Times that $1.57, okay? That was what it was in 2021 or whatever it was the year before. This year, that 850,000 I asked for cost them this. So it cost them $25 more for the year. So every dime you raise it, a $250,000 homeowner is going to pay $25 more in taxes a year. All right? So if you go that times 0.9, what was your number? 0.95? 95? You know, nine times that, so about 200 bucks. Little over 200 bucks, 225 dollars to 250. If you ask for the whole amount of increase that he said, the 0.95 on that scenario he had up there. So John, you.
No, no, I'm getting it.
Followed?
Except that, you know, I'm trying to think your capital outlay today. We were at those levels, so we still continue to have, we have needs here at the school.
Yep.
Continuing.
Yep.
So we have to add that to wherever we're at today.
Yeah.
So if we're at.
To some extent, we'll, I got some slides here to talk about that.
Thank you.
Okay? So our past year's expenditures in capital outlay. And the reason why, you know, when you asked this, I said I'm scared and nervous because of our disasters that have happened. Between our flood and our COVID. Okay, so if you look prior to these, so back to 14 through 18, that's why I went back a little farther than five years. Here was our expenditures that we actually expended in capital outlay. Including your.
QZB bond payments.
Well, QZB bond payments and capital outlay transfers to the general fund.
Got it.
Okay?
You had them both in there.
These all include both of those. Now, this one didn't have a capital outlay transfer last year because of the CRF funds.
Didn't need it.
Didn't need it. So that would have been, you know, maybe 200,000 more, so maybe 607. This one was raised, elevated so bad because of the flood and finishing up with the stadium costs and the track. This was all track and stadium and the locker room remodel. Then we're back to these total expenditures. So $850 or 850,000 that we asked for. Hence the reason why our capital outlay balance has been increasing because we're not spending all of it now or haven't been.
And is there a rough estimate of what the transfer has been?
Yeah, I'll get that in a sec. Yep. Good question on that. So what you can transfer? Okay, you cannot exceed 45% of your total tax revenue deposited during the current fiscal year. So the higher, the more taxes you ask for and deposit, the higher your transfer flexibility is. Okay, like this year, we asked for 850,000, right? So if we collected all 850,000 of that this year, I could transfer 382,500 of it to the general fund for general fund expenditures. Okay? We haven't been close to that number. On that, we did do 300 one year. But I think it's we made our fund balance grow too that year. But we did do 300 one year, and I'm getting that here. So here's our five years of capital outlay transfer. 21 was zero, 20 was 200, 19 was 200, there's that 300,000 that one year, and 18. And then in 17 was 250. So let's just go pick FY 19. I'm going to go back a couple of slides. FY 19, nope, bad number. Sorry. 18, let's go that 300,000 one. Because I've got to stay away from those flood year and the.
Stadium.
Stadium project, okay? So FY 18, 300,000 capital outlay transfer. I mean, we took 300 there, put in the general fund. That was 300, that was, so everything else was 373,000 that year. So maybe I'm being too stingy, I'm buying desks and, and everything, fixing roofs or everything else and they can be paid for in a capital outlay.
Knowing that you can, you asked for 850,000.
But we had, maybe we didn't pay for, maybe we didn't buy a van that year. Maybe we didn't do, yeah, we always have a budget of 30,000 for a van, which I've got some other numbers here to show you kind of preliminary going forward for the next five years. Okay? Does everybody understand this part here? Okay, five year capital outlay transfer, we did that. So now, my next five years projected expenditures. And this includes our QZB bond payment, our $250,000 capital outlay transfer going forward.
Just because that's there doesn't mean you have to. But that's what budgeting was.
Okay, so these are, you know, best guess, don't know, based on history. And I'll show you another spreadsheet here after that has where I got those numbers from.
Craig, do you anticipate the legislature changing? Because we never used to be able to do that, right?
The flexibility?
Right.
No, but it's been how many years now?
If they, if they do that, John. There's a lot of small schools going to be in trouble. You, Katie Bar not, I mean, there's going to be a lot. And if that is their sole mission is to do that, then something like that could happen. But the fact that they did that and answered the blue ribbon at the time of 2016 to give schools the flexibility was kind of the trade off with the new formula coming in. That they hold this harmless on that 45% transfer rule. Man, I tell you what, I don't know that, I don't know that we'll ever see that go back. But anything's possible out there. But it would have to take a heck of a ground swell to really make something change at the state level in their approach to that. That's just my opinion on that. I don't anticipate losing that flexibility. I honestly don't.
Because that's huge.
Yeah. So you know, those things are built in here, 867 left. That's if we expended the whole thing for the last, for the next couple of years till the QZB bond is gone. This is the last half, we only have one QZB payment that year. Hence it went down to 66,000. These two years, QZB payments are gone.
So QZB is.
What we use.
No, I'm, I'm like, 100?
132. Yep, it's 66,000 twice a year.
Let's project it, what you're going to expand. Doesn't mean that you're going to expand that.
And how, I mean, this is just best guess, guys. This is my spreadsheet of how I came up with some of that stuff. Just for everybody's, to get those numbers here in 2027, for instance, I put $120,000. These are budgeted. This is how I come up with that 735 that was left after the QZB. Spending 120,000 in the elementary end, 120,000 in the high school end. That's on textbooks, desks, tables, ceiling tiles, whatever.
Software.
Okay? Got some minimal mild in case sped, we needed something, library services, technology. I did not increase Tony's budget from 30,000 each, any of these next five years. Because one, you'll, I'll scroll over a little bit, you'll see he hasn't been spending 30,000. And plus, if we get the new E-rate kickbacks, right, Tony, hopefully that will getting a little bit more rebates on those. So we won't be spending as much there either. Or at least have some revenue to help out with it. These are minimal ones that are like purchasing a new computer for somebody or maybe it's a software program or whatever. This is the accounting software, time clock systems, things like that. And then I have 125,000 a year if we need to do the truffle floor. If you need to do a roof, if you need to do a boiler.
Need to replace some portions of your.
Parking lot. Yep. Which we need to do a couple of those sometime. Because we haven't for a year or two. Vehicle, I put 30,000 in each year for those, to replace those as needed. Operation and maintenance, 5,000. Maybe that's not enough because I did not plan on mowers or anything like that. But at some point, you know, every year, every, it's going to be five to seven years, you need a new mower. But you might not expend it for five years. I don't, I did, just left that at 5,000. Combined activities, these are for football, all the extracurricular activities combined of what? New uniforms, new equipment, whatever. And then your capital outlay transfer of the 250. And that's where I got the 735 for that 2027. And 2026, those numbers were the same. The only difference here was the QZB payment. QZB payment. Okay, now, the reason why I came up with those numbers, if you go back over here to the actuals. Oops, sorry. 18, I didn't type in all the actuals, I just put the total. But in 2021, for instance, let's look at that elementary term. We said 120 going forward, right, for the elementary and high school. Well, in 2021, I spent 84,000, or we did, in the elementary. Only 64,000 in the high school. So that's, depending on what textbooks are up that year, plays a huge part in, in that. But you look at the year before that in 2020, now, this was one of those inflated years because of the flood. But we spent more. 115, 93. 19, same thing, 123 in the elementary, but only 24 in the high school. So actually, that was the flood year. This could have been the go, the math curriculum or one of those two high curriculums there. But if you go over here, even in 17, we spent 116 in the elementary, but we only spent 91. But then you see, it all depends textbook drivenness. There's two curriculums that are expensive. Quote me if I'm wrong, Mr. Norton, math and English are the two expensive curriculums, correct? If I remember it.
Science, well, yeah, science used to be with them, but.
But it wasn't that bad.
English is probably the biggest.
Because you purchased them for seven years. Because when you purchase those, it's a seven year rotation right now. You're purchasing all workbooks included and everything, all in one. So those are the big years. And that's when we had the higher two totals. That's where I came up with my numbers. When you go down below, same thing down here. Construction improvements, you can see if it wasn't for these two years, the rest of them, 81, 74, 98, 61. We did have a 195 in there, I think there must have been. I don't know why, for sure, I don't remember.
Great, so focusing on the total in any one given year there of what, those are projected. But part of the projection there, correct me wrong, all of those numbers that you just did are equating to the 735,000 projected of 2026?
Yep.
Right? That, let's, let's just say, pull the trigger on this, that doesn't include that in there?
No, no.
Right?
Yes. Nope.
Okay.
But some of the, what I wanted to point out was, this is why I went to those actual expenditures. Am I having here? I don't know what number to exactly put in there.
But if I go, but go back that way to the right in the years, those years in which you actually expended, the dollar, back to that one slide, right? You only expended 300 in one given year, which you did expend.
And FY 15 was only 315,000 out of that.
Right.
And then though we budgeted 800.
Exactly. But you asked for that too. You asked for 800. So, but in your projecting, moving forward, I mean, somewhat of a conundrum there because we're, what we have to analyze there is if the payment, your largest, your, your payment of 400.
488,000.
Yeah, so if you're asking for 800 or 850, that's what we're asking for right now at a, on a dollar equivalent to a $1.67.
Yep.
That's 850. 500 of it to that capital outlay certificate, leaving 350 of it to do the rest of business in capital outlay. Right?
Yeah. And that's probably not enough on certain years. But at one year, it was, only one.
Only one.
So it's probably going to have to go up some. If you did that large of amount.
That's it, yeah, 7 million. That was that the most, right? So there begs the question. I mean, I, if you ask the question, if somebody come up to you and said, could you afford this, school board? Could you afford to do this project without having to go through a bond issue to the public? Could you do this out of capital outlay certificates? That's all about finding the happy medium. And part of that is if you commit to something like this, then it's our responsibility to make sure in the capital outlay budget, we know what that number is. We got to back our way into that number and we got to hold steady. You know, and make sure that we are able to live within our means. And that question that you have to ask yourself, do we do that at the 850 that we're asking right now on the $1.67? Part, I don't know if we can. But okay, what does it look like at $1.77? Well, we just showed you what a 10 cent across the whole assess valuation aspect of things is only going to generate you. I should, that's probably a poor term. It's going to generate you another 50,000. I should, I don't want to give the impression by using that term. So what is that going to take? I, that's why I don't think you can make any decisions tonight to how to answer this question. I mean, that's just sitting in the chair, giving you that feedback. You know, you have all this information now. Now it's some conversations, even for some even deeper thought processes. And if there's something more specifically that you need us to do to give you a better feel for what the numbers truly are. And I don't know how to do that because it's, a lot of those things are concrete. I mean, we're not guessing, but like he jumped all those projected ones up to 120. Well, he just showed you three years worth of, we weren't even close.
No.
You know, I mean, so you're.
That was just the highest one I found back there in the expenditures for FY 17 or whatever it was. And I'm like, maybe we just put that up there and see what it totals.
How soon after you get the money, does a payment start?
How soon after you get the money, does a payment start?
And the one scenario, you had a payment, how soon, Mr. Smithman, after you get the money, you gotta do your first payment, is it every, is it every six months? Is that what?
That's correct, so if you were to issue the certificates in June or July, your first payment would be in February of the following year. Same fiscal, well, no, July would be the same fiscal year.
Yep.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
And so, do you change? What, the fee, the rate, when do you change that? Like if you increase.
What we've asked for from the auditors? September. You have, we have to submit that in September. Approve the budget in September. I have to submit that, I, I have to submit that to the county auditor by October first.
So, so based off of, so, so I, I get, um, you know, we have to. You're giving us a feeling of what we're spending and what we're not spending. When I look at the mill levy here, and you said, um, on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. We'd go up about fifty basis points. If you just said a ten would go twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, yep.
So, so if we went up.
It'd be a hundred and twenty-five dollars on fifty, yep.
Correct. So if we did this here to the T. It'd be a hundred and twenty-five dollars to a taxpayer out here on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar.
Yeah.
In a year.
In a year. I'm just trying to get, just trying to get so people under, understand.
Yep, exactly.
Out here, if we would do.
The five million, is that the five million one that was in the example of?
It was a twenty-year one.
Twenty-year, five million dollar.
Yep.
And that's if you borrowed, or that's if you raised it all to make, then that point five oh was the amount for the payments, you still have.
Right.
Maybe excess possible.
Correct, correct, yeah, what you're telling us up here.
Certain years you would, certain years you might not, but that's why we have a, it's also the realization why we have a balance growing.
So you don't see anything changing dramatically in the next five years on capital outlay? Here, otherwise?
Maybe a trowel floor. I mean, you don't know, I mean, it's a, but we got, but our boilers are good.
That, that's what I'm saying, we're doing all the infrastructure here.
Yep, yeah, the boilers here was replaced with the flood.
Is our roof gonna be okay?
The boiler in the NPR was pretty, that wasn't too long ago, and the, and the high school one's gonna be done with the HVAC project. The roof is, that would be the thing.
Otherwise structurally and, and you're revolving stuff with the desks and the books.
That's pretty new, I mean, I'm.
So if you ask for more than, and you end up getting more than you actually need, then the next year, you could decrease it?
The, yeah.
Taxes. You have, the school board has it.
Every year, every year to ask for a, a dollar amount, based on where you're at. Yep.
I think it's probably more. Um. Great word is more acceptable to just kind of maintain a, a rate.
It's not good to, yeah, I've always been kinda, it's not good to sit here and go play the numbers game, well, okay, let's drop the ship at night, sure, we have to go back up.
Yeah, I mean, you don't wanna be up too high.
Trying to find a steady.
Putting a little bit in, biggie bank every year is.
Yeah. It's trying to find the sweet spot, man, it really is, and it's, it seems like maybe an easy thing to do, but it really not is. Based on what happens in any one given year, right, so trying to back your way into that number where you can hold steady, so you're not riding that roller coaster as a taxpayer.
Is there ever an amount that the state says, like you can't have any more than this?
In capital outlay?
I don't, oh, you mean as far as the.
Like is there a cap or?
Fund balance in capital outlay, no, that's just general fund, isn't it?
Just general.
Just general.
Somebody's gonna look at you goofy if you got.
Well, no, I know, I'm just, I was just thinking.
But there's, there's schools that have three million dollars sitting in their capital outlay account right now.
True statement. And doing, and for what? Why do they have that sitting there? If you ask them, I'm not sure they can answer that.
They're planning for a rainy day.
Well, it's gonna be a rainy day. But to me, that's a, that would be a process where you're doing, you're doing an injustice to your, your taxpayers. If, if you don't need the money. Then don't ask for it. If you're gonna ask for the money and you turn around and stick it in the bank and you watch that thing grow, that, that's, that's a.
I was just curious, I just, I don't know enough about it, I guess, just asking questions, cause I'm probably not the only one who doesn't know.
Well, that's not, that's just not a best practice.
No, yeah.
But there, and that's how we got in trouble. Twenty years ago, because there were some school districts that were in the habit of pigeonholing that money and for what reason? You know, cause they weren't paying their teachers, you know, and they really weren't doing anything from a capital outlay improvement aspect to improve their schools. Cause you can look at some of the things around our state and what they look like, so why are you doing that? Yeah, I don't know, so.
But I didn't, one thing I probably could have put in there was I didn't compare tax amounts to surrounding. School districts around here and what their capital outlay.
We had that, I, we've seen that before.
I mean, we are one of the lower ones.
I was gonna say, I feel like I was on.
I can tell you where I came from. We were max on everything, baby, and that was everything we could do to keep the doors open, so.
And you did a, you did a knockdown too, right?
Yeah, absolutely, two fifty on top of all that, yeah, too.
So what do you, tonight, it's just thoughts, like we just take this and think about it, and is there anything?
I, that's up, you know, if you guys. You have to be comfortable with this whole notion, I mean. Taking a month to think about it, I don't know, that really puts us behind the eighth ball, Mr. Smithman, from, from a issuance perspective, I mean, it's not gonna make us a huge. Difference, it's not gonna get us in the crosshairs, I mean, it's not gonna put us at a disadvantage, maybe with, you know, where, I know the market is pretty volatile right now.
Interest rates.
Right, yeah, rates are probably gonna go up.
Yeah.
Fans gonna be eating twice, you know.
Is leaving and thinking about gonna change anything? Does anybody have thoughts?
I think we gotta know kind of our downer.
Right, I mean, it's kind of.
You don't know the dollar amount till we get an architect.
From these.
Decide what your projects.
Right, gotta know what you're dealing with.
Cause if you pick the high one and your project's only four million, you're still paying the interest on the first ten years at seven, and you can't pay them back early.
Yep.
Yeah. When you, when you sell, you sell.
So can these people come to the next board meeting? Or could we do that?
Some of these vendors, these couple vendors?
We're gonna talk about that?
Uh, yeah, I think absolutely, we can orchestrate something, whether if that's a particular date in May, or if that's something that. Um, you wanna bring a couple people in here.
Special.
Beforehand on a special board meeting to give you a short little spiel as to why you should pick us, you know? So you, I mean, if you remember, you had Coke Hazard, you had Pitt's Construction, you had Architect Incorporated, and you had, um, JLG. You know, so that's more of this second part of this conversation now, what's actually on here, you know, as far as, um. Discuss RFP for Architecture Engineering Services, that's more of the question of who do you wanna talk to? Who do you wanna come in here to help, you know, give you some ideas and, uh, move this thing potentially forward? You know, what it would, what it would look like, how they would do it, what they could do for you, whether it's. An architect approach or an architect with a construction management approach, I mean. I don't know, we never, we had some conversations a month ago about these four, uh. Particular firms, but I don't know, we never really got in the weeds on any of them. I don't know what would distinguish one over the other in your guys' perspective, as to who to talk to. Other than, I'll just make a statement that it was after we tabled that. And within a week, I only heard, out of the four firms, I heard from two. And I asked, I had a conversation with. One of the firms, they said, what's, what is the practice? I said, is it your responsibility or those firms' responsibility to reach out to us, say, hey? We sent you an RFP, what, did you decide, or is it my obligation or our obligation to say, hey, there's what the deal was? The fact that those two reached out to me meant something to me. That meant that, in my opinion, they had a level of interest in what you guys were willing, or at least thinking about to do. It was Architectural Incorporated and it was Pitt's Construction. So if you wanna bring those two in just based on that premise, because when you read through all that even a month ago, you, you saw. Everything was, their RFP was essentially the same, it's, it's a template, they give you the examples, you can go across the state and find any one of their hands or their work. Across the state, what distinguishes one morsel than the other? I, to me, is, those two reached out to me a week after the fact, say, we didn't hear from you. I'm like, oh, yeah, sorry. You know.
Who was it that you had worked with previously?
Um. Coke Hazard, but that had been. Ten years ago.
It was this one you heard?
And I, when I, my time in Garrison, I heard from Architectural Incorporated and Pitt's. Way many moons ago, seventeen, eighteen, twenty years ago, I, when I was at Garrison, we had our beat in there. Uh, that did a five million dollar project at that time. So. But that's all under new ownership, new leadership, I mean, it's.
Do we just wanna bring the two in and talk to them, or what do you guys think?
I feel okay with that.
Does that, I mean, I, I'm a little bit of a loss here, I'll be honest with you, is how to advise you how to do this, you know, with this number, with this information that you have here.
How long would these take? A half hour, forty-five minutes?
Yeah, not even, half hour max.
Then we're still not gonna, I mean, I think we should do that, but we're still not gonna be any farther along, I mean, they're not gonna tell us.
A dollar.
Anything until, you know, a couple months down the road, I guess.
Right, and you saw their timelines in there, each one of them had that suggested timeline, and that, that's something that. Pretty standard, I mean, now what you're looking at, if you bring one of these in, you pick one. What you're looking at is the development of the process with, uh. A hope, which I think it can be done, of letting for bids in December. Of this coming year of twenty twenty-two, in hopes of breaking ground in the spring of twenty twenty-three. I think that's still an achievable goal. Um, moving forward. It can maybe condense some of those portions of their timeline a little bit, but it, it's definitely plausible. And that's where you'd have to bring them in and ask them, I guess, but. But you're right, man, are you any further along in this process, and part of that is, is, remember, when they come to the table and you interview them, how they're gonna do this, or what they could do for you, and part of it is, is how much you can charge us to do this? That's part of the conversation. They're not gonna come with anything that, other than what they've kind of put in here already.
No, but then you decide who you like, right, and then who you wanna work with, and then they give you an amount after they figured it out.
So it's a balancing act.
You have to find someone who's gonna do it.
Sitting here, well, if you're gonna do this, you're really gonna go. Gangbusters on this thing, are you selling out? Because if you are. You might wanna lock in the money. And I know that's a hard deal, and you're like, well, we can't lock into dollar amount until we know what that's going to be. Now, if you need to go through this process first, guys, knowing. How this process works on the backside financially, you, you're more informed, you're better educated, we're better educated. As a, as a whole. Then it is what it is, you go forward and when it comes time to feel comfortable, we like this, we like what this firm is doing. We have an idea of what this potentially could. Be like, look like, it gives us, it meets all of our needs. Okay, then we reach back out to Mr. Smithman and say. Okay, give us the good news or the bad news, you know, based on where the market's at. And that's just kind of where you're at with it, cause doing this, even though he was gracious and us come up in time and educate us, I think it's putting the cart. Before the horse a little bit, because you don't know to do three, five, or seven. Right, and Greg's right, you go with the seven route and it turns out what you really want that meets your needs, maybe that's only. You can did it, you can, it's four, five, I don't know, I will tell you this. My conversations with a couple of these firms and other people and other superintendents. You, right now, you have to put in your head, it's no less than three hundred dollars a square foot. And you're pushing towards three hundred and fifty. And that number. Is not gonna go backwards, so kicking the can down the road. So pre-COVID, they were looking at two and a quarter, two fifty, if it was. I wouldn't necessarily call it the Taj Mahal, but that was the realm that they were working in, and they've all said, we will. Will, they'll put us all on the ground before we ever see that again. So you're not going back to those numbers. And it, between, staying between three and three fifty. Right now.
Once we close a loan and the funds are ours, are we allowed to invest that in any way?
Yes, you are, you have three years to spend on the proceeds. And you can invest those funds up to what's known as the arbitrage rate. You cannot go over that amount because the federal government, the IRS, doesn't want school districts or any other issuers of taxes in debt for that matter, to go ahead and.
Make money out of it.
You know, invest them in soybean futures, right, try to make as much money as possible. So they, they keep the amount that you can get from your investments below that arbitrage rate, if you exceed that arbitrage rate, you have to rebate that back to the federal government.
Great question, yeah.
Yeah, very good question.
Because, yeah, I mean, you could pull the trigger and knowing that you have three years to expend the dollars, but in the same token, it just doesn't have to sit there either.
Okay, I feel like I still don't know what you want us to do.
I'm not sure.
That's what I, I like, what should we?
What are your, what are your options?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking?
Give us some bullet points here.
Are they, when we bring these people in? How much of a description are they gonna need to know? Of what we exactly want? That was in the RFP, I think that's enough, what you put in there. And, and they all told me that, that that gives them a pretty solid base to work from, to start developing something from. You know, and I think some of those questions on your guys' part, I can tell you right now, the biggest contributor to make this price go up. Is in that facility, if we're gonna put all the mechanical in, if we're gonna do heating, plumbing, AC, water, all of that stuff. That's gonna have a huge impact, or you build in a four-wall. Fieldhouse. With. Some access to different parts of it for different reasons, I mean, what is it that you're building? So if you look at your multipurpose room, does it have any bathrooms in it? No, does it have any water in it? No, does this facility need water? Does it need locker rooms? Does it need? Part of that is, depends on where you locate it. Now, if you put it off the other end of that, and you build a vestibule there, you've got an entry into it, right down the hallway, just like you got right now, you got access to bathrooms, you got access to locker rooms. You have those, you got access to water. So could you build it like that? But that's where these guys will come in, whoever, and say, okay, guys, let's, let's talk about some of these ideas. What is the end vision here? And if you want. To put those facilities. Those types of things in that facility. I'm telling you, that's where you're gonna get into increasing costs, not saying you should or you shouldn't, it's just something to consider.
Okay, so options. Call these people in? Listen to what they have to say?
Give them their, yep, they'll come and give you your short spiel, and then you pick one.
Okay.
And then you start working on that path. And in the interim here, maybe we think about, and we're a month away. You know, come back in May ninth, we can put Mr. Smithman's notion of, do we wanna play with this? Capital outlay certificate process, and, you know, in four, in four weeks from now, if we had to. Feel comfortable with it in order to lock in some, a rate. And if they give you some ideas based on, these guys are no better than I do, yeah, you guys want one hundred, hundred, you want a hundred thousand square foot facility, these are the things you want on it, rough estimate. Get in mind, keep in mind, rough estimate, you know, you are talking four millions, or you are talking three million. Then you can say, okay, what do we wanna call Mr. Smithman and say, hey? Sell is five, or sell is seven, or sell is three, you know, and then you, you can go back your way kind of into another with a project, knowing that this is what you have. Keep us here, you gotta keep us here, you can't go crazy on us.
That's what I was just thinking, I mean, everybody's on board that they feel like it's worth it, right? Like we wanna do something, right?
You gotta find a number.
Right.
So, so that's a key to our number, so let's get the people in here.
Okay?
Can we do a special board meeting so we can get a decision?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I mean, yeah, advertise that, we'll just find the time where everybody can and come up with an hour of time.
Make a regular board meeting, I mean, I thought.
Yeah, right, yeah. Every time I come to one, I'm like, tonight is gonna be the night.
Good, it's gonna be good.
And then I get here, I'm like, tonight is not tonight. I'm never leaving, sounds good, no, I'm just kidding, I'm totally fine with it, this is my Monday nights, and I love it. All right, um, so you'll. All right, um, so you'll, can we decide on a time, do you want us to decide on a date now?
Well, I'll have to, if you give me some ideas, but I mean, I'll have to, yeah.
Just look, like, towards the end, we'll look at our schedule when we're done.
Before we get out of here.
Okay.
I'll have to go back to.
So then we'll put on the May's school board meeting?
Do you, do you want ARC Inc. and PIS?
Yeah, we'll go with the two that reached out, and then can you put on to retouch on the finance portion at the next school board meeting?
Yeah, based on where they're at, and then we'll be in touch with that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Spethman.
Jai Shai.
Have a safe journey back home, but yeah, then we can revisit that, if you want to make a, pull the trigger on that.
Yeah, okay, does that sound good to everybody?
Sounds great.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll go back to, do I go back to your report?
You have my report, it's in your notes, if we got any questions on any of it, because if you don't, then we can move on.
Okay.
I, I know it was a little late here, I just had a question, sorry, on the, on the health insurance pool.
Yes, question, yep.
So, so I think you guys went to a meeting?
What's that, I'm sorry, I missed that.
We're talking about health insurance, just got a question on all of those.
I was, I was a little late, I apologize.
Yep, yep, no, that's okay.
So, so you went to a meeting, so, so where exactly is that at, Craig?
Like, our increase, the stuff, or what?
Well, yes, but, but the pool, back a few years ago.
How the financial situation of the pool is.
Correct, how healthy it is.
Yes, and, okay, this will help you with that, um, when we went to the meeting, they told us this, this, the realization of everybody's usage and stuff for the pool should have been a seven percent probably increase, seven something.
Okay, so ours was six something, right?
Ours was a four.
Sorry, okay.
Okay, and ours was the high, the average was supposed to be a seven, so some things they did behind the scenes, and the, the financial situation that the pool is still currently in, allowed them to only do a two, three, and a four percent increase for the three tranches.
Okay, so we were in the high trench?
We were in the high trench, and we have been in the high trench for five of the seven, last seven years, and I have expressed that to, um, the staff as well, I sent an email out explaining that to them fellows, if, if we were, if this was back in the day when it was twelve, thirteen, we'd be at thirteen, fourteen, fifteen percent increases, because our usage is on the high end, but five of the last seven years has been zero, zero, two, four, or three, four, or something like that, in the last five years.
The pool overall, the fact that the average should have been about seven across the board, but they kept you in those tiers of two, three, and four, tells me the pool overall is pretty, is pretty healthy.
Yeah.
Because I don't know if you guys know or not, but we, we chipped in a chunk a while back.
It was to get that thing back to solvent, because you were upside down as an organ, not, not Parkston, but Associated School Board's trust was in a bad way.
We chipped, we put in thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
Every school district put in thousands, so.
But it is much healthier now, Mr. Poole.
And I just wanted to ask those questions, because I knew of what the history was on that.
But we're still doing good, we're still doing good, and they're getting people to join, a lot of school districts are joining, we have over ten thousand belly buttons, they call it, in the pool, currently, so ten thousand members are on the health plan.
The only other one in the state is Northern Plains Insurance Pool, that's where I came from, and then we had, that's down to fifty-seven school districts that are belonging to that one.
We have, we only have about, right about the same, not, a little less, maybe.
Yeah, pretty close.
But ten, they, they cracked the ten thousand, um, belly button mark this year for the first time.
So, so it tells, we had an opportunity also, and maybe it still is today, where you can buy out, but.
They didn't talk about that for sure, but I believe there still is, but to get back, not to buy out maybe, but to get back in, you have to pay something to get back in, and it's a two-year lease.
We were looking at private carriers at that time, and, and thank God we stayed with them.
And there's probably the provision in there, if I recall, that if you get out, they might keep you out for two years.
Yes, there is, that is in there for sure.
And then you're buying back in to get back in there too, and then they want your last two years of whatever it is, your history, say you were with a private vendor, they want to see how healthy you are before they let you back into the pool, too, so.
I just wanted to.
So the natural gas offer, we're, we've got a second one, and now we're just going to wait?
Yep, we talked to Mr. Poole about that, if you had a question, we're going to ride that thing.
That's fine, I just was curious, just so everybody knows.
The level they have is at hot, we, we know where things are at on the energy side, it's at high, high, so why do you want to lock in high? So why not write it out, in my opinion, let's just write it out, and if we have to pay what we pay.
Yeah, for that month, we pay.
And they don't start, we're, we're already locked in till when was it, November or something, October, November?
Yeah, we have a real good one for this year.
Yeah, yep, it's after that, so.
Okay, and then it looks like this, the lunch program thing went out?
Not yet, no. We showed you that letter, um, if you have any issues or concerns with that, but then, um, once we, I mean, if you see it as it is tonight, we'll send out that cans letter, so people know, we'll start getting people, and Scott, I want to thank you, you did a nice article in the paper about no more free lunches, man, I mean, here's the deal, so I do appreciate your efforts on that, so help us spreading the word that, because somebody will not know it, and they're going to show up in the fall of the year, and I'm telling you, they're going to look cross-eyed at this, because they want free meals.
Okay, and then this VFW day?
Um, the reason I put that in there, know that there's potential expenditure to dress up that Parkston sign out there, VFW reached out to me about willing to provide some labor to do that, if we were willing to put forth a few dollars to take out some of that overgreen cedar shrubbery, and clean it up a little bit, and put some, I think, perennials in there that are probably a little bit more aesthetically appealing, so.
So that says that they're looking for help from others, so did, like, the host, did HOSAN that get this?
Yeah, I think all those organizations know of that opportunity for sure.
Okay.
Yep, so, and they're doing two different dates for that, and, and it's all leading up, which, all well, right, and good, it's all leading up to the end of June and the Fourth of July festivities for the Vietnam War, so.
Okay.
I'm not trying to redress here, but on this trust document that was sent, did we get a new boarder director, did we get a new supervisor here, because, I tell you what, I mean.
Yeah, the problem is, is I don't think it's been updated for two.
Well, I see it was two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten.
That's twelve years.
Oh, yeah, that was, you know, I don't, yes.
But we, I mean.
Yeah.
Did you get?
Do you want to send them an email and let them know that they thought that?
I don't know if there's, there is some people new in leadership, but that executive board is made up of superintendents, business managers, yeah, I mean.
Maybe they did that so they could show how much work they put into it.
I don't know, but.
Okay.
So that's my report, Jill, if anybody else has got, oh, just I heard from Damon, I have a construction meeting Thursday at three thirty, so hopefully that brings some good news, with the summer work that's going to be done, now, I think that's just HVAC, I have not yet heard from Lighty.
Ooh.
I'll just leave it at that, so, okay?
All right.
That was mine, report, Jill.
Okay, so we'll move to discussion items, A, American Rescue Plan update, the board will discuss and consider the proposed changes to the current ARP plans.
Yep, so I put that in your packet, it's more for your guys' understanding, and we can use this meeting, Craig and I worked on our, in the grants management, the ARP side of it, I'm working on the narrative side of it that we have to post, I talked to DOE with Betsy Chapman, her person at Department of Ed, who is our advisor on that, and what you see here, this, that's based on what we talked about a month ago, and moving some of these things around, and not addressing those summer reading academy, the math academies, because of the necessity of our early childhood programs, and that's where we're going to invest in, um, a kindergarten teacher, split those sections down, get that down to three years, like Mr. Fisher described a little bit earlier, so we can get a little bit more in-depth with those kids, so.
Should she's good with it, or you don't know yet?
Excuse me?
She's good with it, or you don't know yet?
Yeah, we're good, she's on board, yep, we fixed it in, actually in the grants management system today, so.
And so it's already been approved and?
Uh, well, not necessarily, because it has to go through fiscal too, at the Department of Ed, and she said, but I'll go advocate for you and explain to them if they got any questions as to why we did what we did, she said, I'm not giving you a hundred percent guarantee, she said, but, she said, I think this will work, and the categories, the allowable uses we were putting in would work, so, and then I have to, I have to clean this whole document up, if you remember, this document was like, I don't know, eight pages long, so there's other places, I got to clean the entire thing up, and then we'll upload it, Mr. Kinnenberg will, I'll give it to him to upload on our website too, and it has to be loaded into grants management, so that's really just clarification as to what our approach was going to be, so.
So was this a duplicate, A and C, it says American Rescue Plan, the board will discuss, it's the same thing?
That's this, you're just, yeah.
You must have duplicated it, okay, it's okay.
And the blue sheet's on there.
It's here twice, I just was confused, I thought maybe it was something different, okay, no big deal. Um, all right, so we will move to action items. You don't need anything approved, or motions are?
We do need a motion, we don't approve that. The changes.
The ARP plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you would, because then we can note it, I can note it in there that, because within the six months, we had to revisit it, so.
Okay.
So move.
I'll second.
Move violation, saying we need to approve the safe return to school plan updates as presented.
Wow, that was the ARP plan, just leave it at ARP, most safe return.
Oh, to approve the ARP plan. As, ARP plan updates as presented, any other discussion? Here, no, no, fair enough, full same sign, I'll shoot Gary.
All right, we will move to action items, A, action item is to adopt facility use policy by the public, the board will conduct a final reading and adopt the facility use policy and procedures for the public.
Mr. Kinnenberg, I'm going to defer to you, because one of the things we've visited in the last couple of months on this is trying to make sure that people don't gain access to the facility, if they get a FOB during the school day, um, and I don't know that I actually explained this in my notes appropriately, I may even did it backwards, so, we have the ability to do what to the FOB? Limit the doors, or limit the times, which way is it?
Time, no, limit the doors, yes.
Okay.
And this is what the FOB looks like, and actually, what I did, I went into the system, and I created, so this FOB would only work on like the multipurpose door and the lobby door, that's it, everything else it would not work on.
But we can't, we can't save during the course of the school year from seven to three to shut that off, you can't do that, you can limit the door it'll work on, but you can't shut it down.
But currently during the school day, are all doors locked?
Yes, yep.
But if you come in, someone has to either let you in.
Right.
Or, or even if they have a FOB, you know they've gained access, correct?
Yeah.
Is there like something that goes off that someone knows someone came in the door or not? It's just that you can tell later, like, if you went back to look, you can see someone came through the door.
You have to ring a doorbell to get in here.
Yeah, but if you have a FOB, I mean.
But if they had the FOB, right.
You can just go back later and see who accessed it.
You could.
Yeah, okay.
And you got, and the nice thing is too, this would only allow them in two spots, and we also have big coverage with our security cameras as well, on those spots.
Which, and those cameras are up in the offices, at least in the high school office, for sure, all the time.
Actually, Peg has it up, so she could see who's coming in, would come in the lunchroom area, and who would be able to come in by the NPR area.
Yeah, so those cameras are, they're visible all the time, because I know the concern was, if you hand these out, we're not handing them out like candy, you have to pay a hundred and fifty dollars to obtain the FOB, you have to sign the acceptable use agreement form, the concern was, is having the ability to get in here anytime with the FOB, I can go to any door, well, no, we can limit the door, but I could come in during the, the course of the school day, well, if they did do that, I don't know, mine is pretty clear in here as to.
Well, it is clear in there, but it's going to be after the fact, I mean, if somebody wants to come in and do something, some harm, you know, it's going to be an after-the-fact deal, so.
Yeah.
If they're coming in, they're coming in, man.
That is true.
Right, in my opinion.
They're not going to use a FOB to get in, right? Probably more than likely.
That's a fact.
But they still are under scrutiny via video, only in those two doors, to get in, so we, we know they're in the building, if they just swiped the FOB, there could be that dead period where somebody walked in the door with that FOB, and they dispersed or disappeared within this, in, into the system, because you don't have to go ding-dong.
Is there any way to make an alarm in, not an alarm, just a notification in the office when one of those Fobs would be used? Just so that when it goes ding, they can come, turn their head and look at the camera, or?
Well, the, the software is, first of all, you're dealing, you're dealing with a number of licenses, you only have one license for the software.
Okay.
That you can have open, okay, so you have to actually have the software open in order for that alarm to activate, now, you can go in and see, you know, all the alarms, but there's only a one license.
For the Fobs.
Well, for the software that runs the whole security system on the doors.
But not the cameras?
Not the cameras, no, yes, it's only for the Fobs to unlock, yes, there's a one license, so if you had to try to open on another, it wouldn't let you, because we only have one license for the door lock system.
Can you set the door to be unlocked for any amount of time of the day?
Yes.
And you can choose which doors those are?
Yes.
So why couldn't we just not charge and not have a FOB, and only let the doors be open during those times of use?
Or still charge, and just they wouldn't have a FOB.
Whatever, yeah, but then you wouldn't have to worry about that.
But then you don't know who's coming in the building, because that's how we're tracking.
But we have video cameras.
Other than the video, you're right, and again, it's defined areas of where they're supposed to be.
I mean, then you don't have to, then people who don't like the idea of just anybody being able to come in the door when their kids are here, then at least you have control over.
The time of day.
The time of day, which to me is more important than any of, I don't know, that's just my opinion, like, I realize anybody could get in anytime they want if they really wanted to, but it does feel, I don't, I don't know, it just feels kind of gross.
I've got a couple people who've talked to me regarding that a little bit, too.
So we could unlock the doors from those two doors, we could have it set that they're unlocked to anyone?
Well, it's like right now, when you come, you know, at three o'clock, they're unlocked until like six thirty, because of all the divestments.
And the times could just be posted on the website, you still charge for the usage and?
To me, that feels better than the FOB, but, what were you?
If you have the FOB, though, if you misuse the FOB, you lose it, you come in at two, two o'clock.
That's true.
You lose the FOB, sorry, thank you for the hundred and fifty dollars, next summer you can give us another hundred and fifty and get your FOB, if you have it unlocked, there's no stopping anybody, you could have kids from Mitchell come down, and what, we're going to use the gym until we get kicked out of here, what are we going to do about it?
Why do we always pick Mitchell?
Man, kids up there.
That's my concern, with the FOB, you've got some control over it, that's, that's cost them something, that's worth something to them, and then it's gone, and then the other thing is, if you're just going to do that, then it's pretty much saying, well, whoever wants to come can come.
Right.
You're a five-year-old, guess what, you're going to be here till they get kicked out, and the only way you're going to get kicked out is someone's going to see it on camera, which means a principal or somebody's going to have to look at cameras almost every single night, and it's not that much fun to do that.
Were we going to, the FOB is going to work for the NPR and the lobby door?
When, in here, the, the designated place of entrance, facility access, I believe, was the, uh, the armory door, but you can change that to whatever you want to.
To lock that off during the day, you know, there's double doors going to the NPR, right? And those doors going to the, I mean, they could still, not that we want them in the gym, but for security purposes, can you?
During when?
School hours. She's asking, can you isolate that area?
Yeah.
The flow of traffic prohibits.
Any sort of double. Any sort of double.
Yeah.
Unless you do the NPR doors and you physically put a chain on the inside.
We're not gonna do that. Then it's gonna be a fire hazard.
Exactly.
Then they can't get out.
Nobody gets to eat.
I mean.
Guess we gotta pick our poison if we're gonna do it.
I don't know. Yeah.
John, you're quiet.
No, I'm just listening. I mean.
What do you think?
You pretty much said it then.
Yeah.
Because honestly, right now, the time that you'd be looking at would be probably from 6:30 to about 10:00. And then if they're early birds, but we even have the doors open already at quarter to six, so we'll get kids already coming in, lifting weights. So the amount of time that you're talking about, and of course, then your weekends or vacation days that you wouldn't have school, but.
And then I think that was the whole premise behind it. It was those times when you're, when school is not in session.
Summertime.
Two, summertime, vacation days, where a kid wants to come in and put up a thousand shots. He can do that. You know, I think that was the whole notion, just having access to those two areas in order to work on your skill, you know, development. But it wasn't during the course, obviously, of when school's in session. It was outside of the school.
When were we gonna make this doable?
That's what I was just gonna say.
Because for me, I kind of like, I would just be, I know somebody's gonna hate this idea, so, but I'm just gonna say it. So what if we surveyed the school to see what their thoughts are? Would you feel comfortable?
What, what, what's the survey? I mean, what do you want, what question do you want me to ask? I don't care. I mean, tell me what, what do we want to ask?
Well, I think the concern is safety. So would you be comfortable with allowing this?
To me, it's, the nuances that you got, that we've included in here that have been drafted, how to articulate that so they get the full story, so you're not asking a loaded question.
I mean, you'd have to explain everything, you know, hey, this person has paid $150. They, you know, I mean, I don't know exactly how it worked out.
I'm not opposed to that. I don't know how to inform them, so they can make a, an informed decision.
So if we do implement this, would it be an okay idea to maybe hold off till the end of the school year and kind of do a test run over the summer?
That's what I would envision.
And iron anything out before next school year, and if we need to change something?
Yeah, I don't want to do it.
That's what I would truly envision, Matt, is, this isn't something that I would expect us to put in place with the short time that we're at now. But certainly, we could sit down with our students before they let them out of school, say, hey, there's this new approach here. Here's what's gonna happen with that. You know, so during the course of the summer, here's what you're potentially gonna have access to. And give it a trial run and see what kind of, if abuses, you know, evolve out of it, or, yeah, the kids did due diligence and it worked well.
Makes sense. Because then we don't have the concern about it in school for the moment.
And you'll get a chance to see it during the summer. And part of that is, we'll be able to track utilization of it too. How many people actually came in here?
Yeah.
I don't know. Maybe it's not as many people we think. But I know summers, is that a, is that a good gauge, you know, for access? Because you're outside, you know, right? You're doing those things. This, this became something that you'd be shocked with, and not shocked, because this is where we're gonna get into, if we have any issues with this, come up here on a Sunday. In the short time that I've been here, come up here on a Sunday during the course of the school year. Well, if you think you're just gonna come up here and put up a thousand shots, good luck, because you're not gonna get in here. Why? Because Adam's got something scheduled in here that, scheduled activity says right in here, that takes precedence of you coming in and putting up a thousand shots. Now, if you can find the window where it's not, more power to you. And if that's 9:00 at night to 10:00 at night, knock yourself out. But during the course of the day, it's, this thing's busy.
Yeah.
But that's not a bad thing. It's, that's what you hope, I think, in your utilization of your facilities. But I like your idea of holding off June 1 to August 1, June 1, August, yeah, two months, let's give it a whirl. We're not out until 17 or 18, so. Just my opinion.
I also like, we had, I just got back from the AD conference, and this kind of came up there with a couple ADs. And Eric Denning from Mount Vernon, they have it at Mount Vernon. And it's made such a difference in his program that now he's really trying to get it with Plankton. The Plankton kids can't keep up with the Mount Vernon kids because they don't have access. And so he's going through this process right now. Talked to, we had, I got a list of four different schools right here that all have it. He's trying to put together the same thing. Because right now, I think he said he had 22 kids on the varsity, only four from Plank. Because they aren't, they don't have access, they can't keep up, they're not getting in, they're not lifting as much, they're not shooting as much, you know, and they have beautiful facilities there, but they can't use them. And so I thought that was pretty interesting. And that, I mean, so it's a, it's a talk, you know, and he was going around talking to a bunch of ADs, so I had a chance to kind of listen to some of those conversations. And it's all these things that we've been talking about. But I think it is a game changer for our kids to have access to.
Mr. Knapplin?
Yes.
Anything could have put you on the spot. Could, could a Mitchell kid get into the gym anytime they want to?
Um, unofficially, yeah. But, I mean, like, like, they don't have, there is no facility use FOB deal like that at Mitchell. Do we have it in Oak Point? Yeah. And it worked in Oak Point really well. We loved it. As soon as, like, just like you said, as soon as it happened, it opened up the right ways. And then it kind of puts that on aside. The responsibility's on them and not the school, which I think is a big part. And Mitchell's just too big.
Sure. But did you ever have any issues at EPJ when you were time there? Were somebody abused, or vandalism, or destruction, or theft, or?
Probably more without it. Like you said, because like you said, the ones that want to do that, they're gonna get in without it. They don't want to be marking their FOB on the way in the door to do stuff like that. And they're finding, they're finding the roundabout ways. So like when you talk about just having the doors unlocked at a certain time, that opens the door a little bit more, because except the ones that don't want, you know, that want to escape the camera and get in and do it, they have better access than a FOB would do. Because usually, a FOB usually almost always means too, like, there's gonna be somebody that's responsible there.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have to approve, or?
Yeah, this is third reading. I mean, you need some, if you're gonna go through with this, adopt it. Put it out there.
Yeah. Okay. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by approval. Decided by Chantel to approve the facility use policy by the public. Any other discussion?
So you want to put a start date on it?
Yeah, we should put a date on it.
Okay. To start, to start June 1. We'll put that at the end. To start June 1st, 2022. Any other discussion? Here in none, all, favor say aye. Vote same sign. Motion carried.
All right. Action item B is approved. 21, 22 school calendar makeup day. The board will decide to add a date to the current school calendar for either all students, certified and classified staff, or just, you guys supposed to say or?
Yeah.
Or just staff. This is to account for the November 19, 2021 date that was declared as no school due to the girls qualifying for the state volleyball tournament. So we need to decide if we want the students to come or just the teachers, the way, or what?
Your dismissal date is May 17th right now for kids and teachers. So essentially, if you're adding a date to make up that, that's May 18th, which is a Wednesday. Do you want students and staff here? Do you want just staff here? Do you want certified and classified? Because that was part of the conversation, that classified lost an opportunity, you know, for employment on that particular day. So we told them that we would circle back at the end of the year to give them that option. Or you're just gonna wipe the slate clean and let everybody go, which Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Norden, correct me if I'm wrong, has been done from time to time in the past, depending on what kind of winter it's been?
Not so much that. It's been a day where.
Teachers usually.
Teachers come in.
And staff.
If we have five, six snow days, generally, everybody comes back, students and staff. If it's one or two, then it's usually just staff for a day.
I mean, these kids aren't gonna pay attention anyway. It's the last day. I don't know that that matters.
Is there gonna be more need to do classroom cleanup because of construction, or is that not an issue with the?
For the classified?
Well, for both.
Um, yeah, I think, well, I, yeah, we're, we're, I think we're gonna get, there's gonna be some, there's gonna be some stuff moving, I think, this summer, yeah.
So, so I don't think it's gonna make much, I know what our contracts say, per se.
177.
And we're at what?
So if you move this day there, and they worked 176.
If we add it or we don't add it?
If you don't add it, they worked 176.
So, so I don't think it's gonna matter much to the kids.
Right.
And so why not bring back the staff?
Yeah, I agree.
Your guys' decision.
And then we're good for the year.
Yep.
So certified and classified staff?
Yeah.
Or just staff? Both?
Both.
We have a little project for our classified staff too, that we think will, and part of that is, is, I'll offer that, the option to them. You don't want to come, don't come. But you're not getting paid either.
Okay. All right. So moved.
Moved by Nible.
Second.
Second by Weber to amend the 21, 22 school calendar by adding May 18, 2022 for certified and classified staff only.
Okay.
All right.
Any other discussion? Here in none, all, favor say aye. Vote same sign. Motion carried.
All right. We'll take a recess for five minutes.
We gotta do one more thing before that.
See, get on there.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Approve the master contract negotiated agreement. It's a big thing. The board will finalize the 22, 23 negotiation package offered and agree upon by the certified staff.
Just need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
Moved by Chantel. And a second by Leishner to ratify negotiated agreement for the certified staff for the 22, 23 school year.
Mr. McManus?
Yes, sir.
If you had a quick question here on the contracts, are we putting in the 177 days?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'm just asking.
Yep. Any other discussion? Here in none, all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carried.
All right. Do a short recess, five minutes.
So, meeting's over essentially.